Okay, I am going to call the City of Groton Public Hearing for Monday, March 5th, 2018 order. Clerk Patrick call the roll, I guess.
Present are Mayor Keith Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Lawrence Garish, Councilors Jill Rusk and Gwenda Yerney-Pope. Currently excused are Councilors Jamal Beckford, Steven Sheffield, and Rashad Carter. And Clerk Deborah Patrick is present.
Okay. The City of Groton Notice of Public Hearing, the City of Groton Mayor and Council will hold a public hearing on Monday, March 5th, 2018 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the City of Groton Municipal Building, 295 Meridian Street, Groton, Connecticut for the electors of the City of Groton and all others qualified to vote to solicit input concerning designation of the City of Groton Utilities Commission as a Water Pollution Control Authority. Date of Groton, Connecticut, this 21st day of February 2018, Keith Hedrick, Mayor, and this was published in the day newspaper. The section, the next section is a public comment. This is the solicit input concerning designation of the City of Groton Utilities Commission as a Water Pollution Control Authority from the electors of the City of Groton and all others qualified to vote. Before we have the public comment, I'm going to ask the Utilities Director, Ron Gade, to have a small presentation and then we will have the public speaking. Ron, if you can, if you will.
Does that work? Can I talk loud enough?
It should be okay.
Should be okay, I will speak loud. This is the same presentation that we gave the Utility Commission last month and we did committee the whole meeting last week. It should answer most of the questions that you have. It's going to tell you why we should do this. It's got a draft set of user charges. The user charges will not be set until the Utility Commission will be the WPCA if this most forward at that point creates a budget to create exactly what they are, but we've come up with a good draft for a shot. Customer impacts, budgeted revenue requirements, aggregate capital needs for the facility to keep the sewer plant running, the organizational structure that's going to fall out, and then the implementation schedule as it looks as we go right through budget time where this would be implemented on July 1st. Why should we do this now? First off, it's industry best practice. Out of about 75 to 80 municipalities in the state of Connecticut, there's currently only a couple, three or four, that don't use user fees to bill out their sewer costs. So we're about last in Connecticut to apply. It creates equity among customers, meaning everybody, the goal is to use a cost of service study to have everybody pay their fair share of exactly how much of the sewer system they use. And we're going to find out that the rates are basically on volume, so it's tied to volume. The largest volume people will spend the most money on sewer. One of the main reasons we're doing this is to ensure that we have adequate capital project funding and sustainable day-to-day operations. So currently, it's not that we haven't been doing capital improvements because we just finished the first phase of about $6 million spend upgrade on the sewer plant, but there's more to be done. And if we do it the current way we're doing it, it's tied directly to the mill rate assessed to your property values and it becomes political every time we spend money for infrastructure upgrades. The idea of moving it to the Utility Commission as the WPCA is that it takes the politics out of it and it makes it very pragmatic to use Utility Commissioners looking at the system to say, yes, we do need that infrastructure upgrade and therefore we should do the bonding or borrowing or use cash to buy the capital upgrade as appropriate. The Utility Commission has detailed financials that they look at every month. The other thing is that going forward with this on a user fee basis allows us to use favorable financing terms with the state. We have the opportunity to get low interest loans and possibly grants, very similar to the water treatment facility grant that we brought on that $54 million budget. They are basically a $15 million loan helping the subsequent cost of action project. The rate is basically so much a month for the size of your meter and then 5.4 cents cubic foot of water usage. I'm going to interpret this in a way that you should be able to reflect on your water bill. The average water bill is $32 a month. The $32 a month water user, their sewer bill, if they have a 5/8 inch meter which is 22, over almost 2,300 of the meters, most residential's, is going to be $31 if your water bill's $32. So that's, if you're trying to figure out what this is going to cost you on your utility bill, it'll be almost the exact same as your water bill. As we saw on the slide rate before this, there's about 2,500 accounts that will be converted over. This is 0% increase on a table that was used with a 2-mill reduction against the property tax. Almost all of the accounts are going to see a net reduction. There's a fair number that do go up and there's some that didn't pay anything because they could be churches, they could be charities, they could be other state facilities that actually do not pay sort of property taxes now, therefore they never contribute to the sewer account. So, this is average. The typical residential customer, bill is going to go down $40 a month. And the way, the reason it slides up is there's a 1% increase in scale, assuming that costs always go up 1% every year, so the costs go up. And then the typical non-residential customer, actually their bill goes up $4,000 a month. But who's using the majority of the sewer system? Probably the larger industrial customers. I don't know, that's what this graph says on the lot.
Hold on, not $4,000 a month, $4,000 a year.
Yes, sorry about that.
Good you grabbed that. Yes, those are annual interest.
The customer will go down on average $40 a year. Typical non-residential customer, I mean, you got some big industrial there. Sorry about that, please correct me if I do that again. This slide actually shows Thomas Seymour, Eastline, Bridgewater, Thominson, Middletown, City of Waterford, City of Groton, Town of Groton, Bolton, Ledger, Gravenham, Haven, Norwood. The rate that we believe is going to sustain the spend for the sewer town is $31. So basically at this meeting, I'm committing that the utility has done enough looking at this that we believe the rate will be 30, about $31 a month for the average user whose water bill is $32 a month. We've done detailed budget sheets that take operating expenses as cash, that takes the debt service, which is kicking in this year that hasn't hit the tax base yet, it's almost $700,000. That's for the project that was finished. It takes expected capital infusion, which we're estimating on average to be about $2 million a year, to make the total account spend somewhere between $4 and $5 million a year is what we're estimating. And the goal is just to levelize the spend and then do some borrowing so that you're actually depreciating as you're paying off the loans, which is the way that most utility clients. Guys, what this shows is that they've come up with, this is FY 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, this is actually showing a summary of the detailed capital spend that the water will put together for us. What they're planning on doing is doing videos that document the need of the collection system, see which pipes have failed or caved. And then it actually says, well, after the first year when we do the video, we actually come along and we start rebuilding the collection system and then we have the second phase of the plant we built that was, we started over the last couple of years and just finished. So you can see here up in 23, it goes up to almost $4 million. But at that point, we should have debt financed and then have certain cash flow that levelized that capital spend off of our $2 million. The way the organizational structure would be is that the utility would have the electric company, water company, and the WPCA running underneath the Utility Commission. In order to do that, there's two ordinances that are on the agenda to be read tonight. The first moves the WPCA to the Utility Commission. The second gives the WPCA the authority to set user fees, since that hasn't been done in the City of Groton before. This is the schedule. This is actually, within the schedule now, this is the presentation of the first reading of new ordinances in the public hearing. There has to be a second reading to allow the Utility Commission to take the WPCA. Utility Commission will come up with a budget. There will then be a public hearing to discuss the user fee. And then with the adoption of the budget, the user fee will go into effect as of July 1st on that next schedule. That's what I got.
Okay, thank you. Clerk Patrick, could we get the list?
There's just one name on that. I want to move the camera back.
Okay. During the public comment section, we will give you five minutes for public comment. Please speak into the microphone when you come up, state your name and your address for the record, and then state your comment. This is not meant to be a back and forth, but it allows you the opportunity to speak. When this comes up during a council meeting, that's not true. Well, come up and speak and then we'll go from there. We'll see, because the first questions that you need to get answered, I want you to have them answered. Who's first on the?
Good evening, folks. Ernie Koschmider, 377 Benham Road. So I've listened to a lot of the presentation here and thank you, Mr. Gade, that was very, you did answer a lot of my questions, so I do appreciate that. And I know a lot of time and thought has gone into this presentation, obviously. So I just wanted to voice a few of my concerns to the council. Obviously is, you know, I'm, I own a duplex as well as a resident here and I did run my numbers and stuff just to see what it really meant, you know? And I think it's a little bit skewed, like Mr. Gade, and I talked about this a little bit earlier, but for me, I will see an increase in my bill. You know, I will. So that's a big concern and I'm trying to go into this open eyes, you know? I want to hear it all through and out and everything. Obviously, I've lived in the city for 50-plus years. I was born and raised here. I love the City of Groton. There are benefits for us folks that live here. That's why we love the City of Groton so much. So some of my concerns are simply this, if folks like me that have a pool or have nice gardens, some fruit trees and stuff that we do use water, am I going to be paying on the water usage in that form? So that's one of my concerns because I'm not necessarily using the sewer. I've heard, and I agree, if you use, you pay. I get that. I do see that. Is there a way that I could break that out somehow without the big expense of putting in my own separate meter and everything? You know, I think yet that that's another burden. Again, if we do have rate increases and stuff, obviously I'm going to have to pass that on to my renters in some form, in some way, shape or form. So that's a concern as well. If we do have an increase or we do have this put in place, are we going to be paying monthly? It's just a, you know, for something to consider. Is it going to be quarterly? Is it every six months? You know, I'm trying to understand that as well. So those are, you know, a couple of my concerns. Like I say, I'm open-minded on this. You know, I said, there are a lot of benefits for living in the City of Groton. I get concerned every time we see something that sounds too good to be true where our mill rate's going to drop, so therefore my taxes are going to drop. But on the other end, you know, I'm going to be paying the sewer tax. I get very nervous that what happens the following year, am my mill rate's now going to go up double? I always feel like there's never anything you're going to give up that did not go and get back from you in some way, shape or form. So that's just my concern. You know, and like I say, my wife and I are in the process of finalizing a new residence that we want to build in the City of Groton too. So I'm trying to take all this in to see what's really, what it's about and everything. And again, tonight was very informational, so I thank the folks that did that and everything. And those are just some of my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll wait till the, who's next?
Kevin Trejo.
Kevin Trejo, 536 Shennecassett Road. And I don't know where to go with this right now. I've heard how good it is for utilities in the sense of adding to the money to it, putting the sewer and everything else. How's it going to affect the city budget? How's it going to affect the taxpayers? Is it going to lower the mill rate by taking this off along with the 700 and some odd thousand that the city got back from the town in the upcoming budget? What are the numbers in comparison on this where this is going to be beneficial? And I say that is GU for years has had a wonderful reputation. The city for years has put their hands in business acquisitions that have gone south many areas. I think a little bit more needs to be explained to the taxpayer and the utility person about what's really going on and a better cost analysis to come out because the key words are key words. You can sell them anywhere and Groton Utilities is a political basis body owned by the city. That's why we're so much different. So I think we need a little bit more information going forward on the budget along with the fees.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right, let me address a couple of the issues. I asked the Finance Director to run some numbers for me and if we keep the WPCA in the general fund this year, the mill rate will go up 1.11 mil. If we remove the WPCA from the general fund and move it into the utility and make a user fee, the potential is up to 0.98 mils decrease. So the difference between the max you're going to pay and the max that you could get back is roughly two mils. And that's where the two mils come from. One of the things that we did was we took two mils off of property values, we took it for property values, personal property, vehicles and private property. We come up with a number and then we used actual rates for people for water rates based on this formula and we came up with numbers and we looked at the difference. One of the things that I had us do last week was I, Director Gade and I went into his office, we pulled up a map of the city and we started north and I said, get something off of this road, get something off of this road, this road. And I went all the way through the city to try to get a representative sample and we picked approximately 20 streets. And then he turned it over to General Manager Daniels to take a, Customer Service, General Manager, to take a, she pulled the numbers, so I don't even know which houses she pulled. We then ran those numbers and then we ordered them and we had 34 locations that we pulled. Of those 34 locations, there were probably five, which turns out to be mathematically approximately 14.7 or 15% of people who would have to pay more in the fees than the tax base. That may be due to, there's a whole lot of reasons it could be due to. It could be due to the value of the house property. It could be due to the amount of water usage, those kind of things. But for 85% of randomly selected people in this city, people were going to make out. They were going to do better. Now, to address the issue about gardens and pools and things like that, one of the things that we originally looked to do was we evaluated a winter averaging and we actually thought that the winter averaging would be less than doing an annual averaging. And then when we run the numbers, we were surprised that the actual winter average numbers were higher than a mathematical annual average. So one of, there's two things we could do. In a case like that, you could put another meter in, but you're right, it's expensive. It's like $1,000 to do that. So then you have to look at your own return on investment, is that what you want to do? One of the things that the utility is still, that we are still looking at, that the utility is looking at, is a way to bill so that what you're being billed for is what's going through the sewer. We, I don't think, we haven't 100% figured that out yet, right? We're still working on it. This is, what we're trying to do here is we're trying to be equitable. We're not trying to gouge anybody. We're trying to be fair. The, hold on, what else? Fees. The fees, it will be a monthly fee. So when you pull your electric and water bill, you will now see a monthly fee in there of what the sewer bill is. So that will all come in there. One of the things that we have talked about is not just the impact on residents and not just the impact on commercial and industrial customers, but also the impact on renters because we're concerned about that as well. One of the challenges you have with renters is you have, you have two basic categories. You have large-scale renters, meaning renters that are behind either one meter or there's a meter for a complex and the metering of that. And then on the other hand, you have duplexes and triplexes which are different. And then within those two categories, you have subsets of whether or not the renter pays utilities. Some renters pay utilities, some renters do not pay utilities. So it's, it is very complicated as far as that goes because you could be all over the place. As, uh, hold on, as far as, let me address the one outlier here. The, we, in 2000, in, in 2016, the town council withheld $830,000. As a result, our mill rate went up a little bit over one mil, but because our mill rate is so small, the percentage ended up being large. It was somewhere between 21 and 26%. The 21% was a direct correlation due to the roads and highways which we eventually went to arbitration and we won. The question has been, where did that money go? Over the last, well, one thing, in the next, by probably the 2nd of April, I'm, we're working on a presentation and I'm going to address from 2000 and probably 13 or 14 to present, what happened to the mill rate, where the money came in, where the money went out, to try to make this a little cleaner and clearer. But that money did go back. The mill rate went up to 5.8 something. The mill rate now is 5.22. That's where the current mill rate is. So that was applied. The next year in 2017, the town council held back $738,000. So this year, I did the same thing that we did last year and I had Finance Director Uhas do an audited account of how much money we actually spent and we sent a letter to the town council, excuse me, to the town manager and to the town council and we asked for the money that we actually spent. That amount of money, we were obligated, 738,000, we actually spent 596,000. So that's the money that they're going to give back to us. The town council acted on that recently, I would say a week, maybe two, max, I think it's more like a week ago. They have contacted us and due to some cash flow issues, instead of giving us the 596 all in one shot, we're going to accept five installments of $118,000, I think is the amount, which we will get all that money back before the end of this fiscal year. All that money will go into the general fund, which is where the money came out of to begin with. So that will not necessarily, that's not true, not necessarily, that will not impact the tax rate. What is going to impact the tax rate is once we move the WPCA from the general fund underneath user fees, and let me be clear on this, it is a fee, it's not a tax. Now, now that I've said that and I sound like a politician, let me be very clear. I recognize that if the tax rate goes down, you're going to get some money back. So you're going to put that in this pocket. I also recognize you're reaching out of this pocket to pay the fees. So whether we call it a fee or whether we call it a tax or whether we call it kumbaya, it feels the same because you're having to pay. I understand that. The tax rate has the potential, correction, the mill rate has the potential to go, go down 0.98 mils. I will not take the full 0.98 mil part of that this year. And the reason I won't do it is one of the things that I'm trying to do is we're trying to run a municipality like a, like a business. So instead of taking everything and then having to raise taxes, then what I'm looking is I'm going to level it out. So probably half of that will go that, go this year, which will lower your taxes and then half of it will be set aside for next year because when we talk about all things politics and everything else, if I lowered your mill rate this year one mil and then next year if something came up about either revenues or expenses and I miscalculated and I raised taxes next year one tenth of a mil, that's all you would see on all signs and things like that. Everybody raised taxes. So what we're going to do is, and this is because it's a business, is we're going to levelize taxes this year, I'm going to levelize them next year, and something that we have talked about, but we haven't went into great detail, is in 2020, in the 2020 budget year, Electric Boat is going to start building on the Columbia Class Building. That is a 280,000 square foot building. The fees for that is going to be approximately somewhere between $3 and $6 million. So what I'm going to do with that money is some of the money is going to go into the general fund, some of the money is going to go to reduce taxes and some of the money is going to go to pay for the services that's going to be needed. I need, I'm going to need fire marshal services and I'm going to need building inspector services because of the size of this building and I'm going to need full-time people to do that. So what I am looking to do right now, my plan of record as of today, is that I am going to pay for that as contract labor out of those fees and not bring them on as employees. Because if you bring them on as employees, now I'm worried about OPEB and everything else down the road and raising taxes for that. I need these guys for two and a half, three years. So we're going to pay them upfront, that's not true, that is not true. We're going to pay them as it goes along. We will pay for the, we will pay for the service and once the service is done, then we will no longer need that contract labor and then they will be free to go somewhere else and the taxpayer will not be burdened by additional miles to feed. That's what I'm looking to do. 7:38, we talked about taxes, budget, pools. I think I, did I address your issues? Kevin? Well, Ernie, did I address your issues?
Yes, you did.
Kevin, did I address your issues?
Okay, no problem. I'm just listening.
Okay, but is there a question that? Okay, but is there a question that you think is out there that was not addressed?
Presently, no.
Okay. Let me make sure there's nothing else that, okay? That's it. I mean, that's where I'm thinking. This is where I'm looking to go. This is how I'm wired, and this is what we're looking to do. Like I said before, we ran the numbers, and if we keep the WPCA in the general fund, the taxes will go up approximately 1.1 mil. That's not scare tactics, that's a fact. If we move them, we're still going to be paying user fees. There's a list of people that I am going to see, there's a list of people Key Accounts is going to see, and there's a list of people that Customer Service is going to see to let them know what their new rates are going to be. I am going to be getting my faith-based organizations together to let them know. I'm going to talk to Riverfront, I'm going to talk to UConn Avery Point and Marine Science Magnet High School, and a couple other organizations so that they hear it from me and I tell them what the numbers are. Because these are organizations that are either tax-exempt or non-taxable entities in one form or another. They may be state, city, town, or they may be nonprofits, and therefore they have not paid in the past, and now they're going to be paying a fee. And even if the fee's a couple hundred dollars a year, it's something that I think they need to hear it from me, and they're going to. So that's where we stand. Are there any other, excuse me, any other comments? Anybody else that wants to speak? Okay? With that, I'm going to adjourn to meet the, I'm going to close the public hearing. Thank you. Okay? Public hearing is closed.